I want to know about Brian.
Oh, thanks.
Damn. I'm very good.
They're all eight minutes ago.
But you said you were saying that. Is that a good strategy?
Yeah.
It's pretty risky. You know, with Wifey. I wouldn't have answered. Did you know?
We don't.
I don't like it.
You do that.
I was surprised it really stood out. It was. All went down.
I like that.
I swear to God. They promised they'd come to my dump.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yes, I get to be this guy.
Yeah. You can't do all of them.
And you don't want it anywhere.
He did see that. I don't know. I don't know.
Sure.
It's right.
That's everything. Oh, my God.
I'm also.
You're.
I bet.
What they need stuff.
You want to spread that, right? Down the side.
It's. A month. A month and a half. Wow.
Called meeting to order. If you do our indication for us.
Holy Father, we just come before you. We thank you for this time. And we just pray, Lord, that you'd give us the wisdom that we need to be able to make the decisions that you'd call us to do. We thank you, God, for today. We just pray blessing over every person here. And we just thank you for everything you're going to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
And you want me to come plug? I pledge allegiance to our flag, our government, to its America, and to our republic, which stands one nation under our command, in the name of our Constitution, the Constitution, and the Constitution of America. And Tracy is absent. First thing we will call off our names for us. If you could do the roll call for us, first.
Carrie.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Renee.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion by Lee, who would support. Support by Carrie and a discussion among the board. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the past meeting minutes from May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the past meeting minutes.
Motion by Carrie, who would support.
Support.
Support by Lee and a discussion among the board. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Are there any questions on the treasurer's report or comments?
Great interest again.
Yep. Right, hearing none. We will put that on file. Next, we have paying the bills. Do you wish to pay the bills?
Pay the motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Carrie, who would support.
Support.
Support by Renee and a discussion among the board. Hearing none, we'll follow vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Christie, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports. If you would.
Thanks, sir. Senator, I report. By an increase in calls, obviously, with weather change. Three of the four potential candidates have gone and had their physicals done. Two have passed, one is on medical hold right now, waiting for some other things. We're starting the orientation phase with the first two. Treasurer and I wrote a ten thousand dollar grant from the state of Michigan for firefighter equipment. It's a pretty easy grant, not in this report. But last week I was contacted by the DNR. They released their funds as well, so I just wrote another grant for about five thousand dollars in miscellaneous wild land equipment. So we'll keep our fingers crossed with those. Other than that, nothing else.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have our planning commissioner reports. If you would.
We met May thirtieth. We had quite a few things we went over. We, because we had a missed work session meeting. First thing was a public hearing for site special use and a site plan review for eight ninety-eight West McMillan for Salud Banquet Hall. It's right behind the BP off of Whitehall. It's a request to establish wedding venue with rental cabins, construction in phases with venue building, parking lot and driveway being phase one. Multiple comments from the public that live adjacent to the property voicing concerns of traffic and noise. The applicant addressed some concerns, all musical be in the building, and the venue is set up as far from residents as possible. Motion approved. Next was a site plan review and a special use for thirty ninety, thirty ninety-six Pillon Road for childcare group home or daycare. They're servicing six to twelve children. Motion approved. And then we have another special use and site plan review for three ninety East Tyler Road for Lake Shenepahoe. They're just requesting an amendment to this land use for thirty by forty pavilion, basketball court, and continuation of their six-foot wood fence along property line. Pretty straightforward explanation with minimal questions from the commission. Motion. And then we talked about ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, which is agenda later for temporary special use permits, special events venues, and enforcement process. It's just. Say it's here now, so it's not, it's just a public hearing for tonight, isn't it?
The public hearing happened already at the land commission, so it's here for approval.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm confusing myself in my own writing here.
Yeah, they passed the hearing.
Yeah, passed the hearing. So everything looked good, and we discussed it multiple meetings. Motion approved. And then our discussion items from the work session that was canceled was for childcare group homes. There's a incident, or not incident, but like a situation that came up where in our ordinance, you can't have more than two group homes within fifteen hundred feet from each other. These two homes are right next to each other. One wants to, one already services six to twelve children, and the other one can only go from one to, one to six. But they want to go to more because there's quite a shortage of daycares around. So we discussed removing the fifteen hundred foot road for childcare homes. Next was accessory dwelling units, which is like an in-law suite or just another dwelling on a already residential property. We were discussing parameters. Should we put one in place in ordinance? Last item is dimensional requirements for dwellings. Since we're talking about accessory dwellings, that's why this came up. Might as well change it at the same time instead of doing multiple changes inside the same section. Because our minimum square footage is one thousand square feet in most of the districts except for Lake Residential, which is seven hundred and twenty. If people want to start building smaller homes or smaller accessory dwelling units, it might not apply. So that's where we can look at that.
Thank you. And next, we have the zoning board, the key reports. If you would.
Hey, called order six P M. All present except Marvin Nash. We had the Z B A resolution twenty-two oh six and twenty-three oh one, both were accepted. We had five public hearings on properties that involved Anderson Road, Whitehall Road, Lake Shore Road, Central, Middle Lake Road. It's like each person wanted to parcel off their property and allow family members to build on their property. We had public comments concerning the Whitehall Road property, but property owners were within their legal rights to build and all were approved. So motion to adjourn it. Seven thirty, yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have our maintenance and grounds reports. If you would come on up, Nate.
Pretty difficult month for a summer, other than zero rains on the ground instead, except for where we have irrigation. And put out a bunch of picnic tables. We got enough lumber to do about three more. So probably put one at the bike trail somewhere, and we're just trying to add them where we think we need them. Got quite a few pulp and everything, so. Already been seeing them being used all the time, too, every time we drive by, so that's good. Also trying to work on a fountain in back here in the pond field, some of the crazy, crazy mosquitoes. Street signs. The, we, we just started this week pretty much doing street signs. We got about half a dozen done. They're not going as fast as we thought because they're old. Trying to figure out new ways to tack one. We're getting them done. It's just they're taking a lot longer than we thought. But yeah, gonna be working on getting the new trucks fitted for winter equipment. Don't even want to think about winter, but we gotta get the truck ready, so. Pretty typical month other than that.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have our first public comment section. So if any, if you want to comment on anything on the agenda for up to three minutes, please come up to the lectern. There will be a second public comment section at the end where anyone can comment on anything. If anyone would like to come up. I know it's not a huge agenda. All right, we'll move into our decision items. So the first one is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four for the expenditure policy. A few adjustments here. So one is to define promptly essentially for getting checks in, depositing in the bank, that type of thing. Another is to define, clarify what you did according to state law, but fully within the power of the treasurer to make sure that the taxes, right? Because most taxes that you pay in property taxes do not come to the township. They go through the township to the county, the schools, and those types of things to make sure we're getting those done on time, which I believe for the timeframes that Christie has on us. So that's within her power. And then other portions I added in where the clerk or the treasurer or the deputies for those positions in a few spots where the supervisor can do certain roles. Certain roles are exclusive to certain positions, but at other points, they can be more flexible. And so these adjustments are to make it so that we can redistribute the work where needed to get it done.
It did include my duties on the timeframe that I have to distribute the taxes. There's, every two weeks has to be dispersed out to the proper entities. That's what that is.
Things being paid on time. Some of those parts.
Most things. We've had certain things that haven't been paid on time and some important things. So, but that's, I mean, a part of doing this, so I can push some of that forward.
Good. That's why I was hoping.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-four for the expenditure policy.
Which by Noah, supported by Carrie, you know, a discussion among the board. If not, roll call vote for us.
Lee.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Christie, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the Twin Lake Welcome Sign. So the Twin Lake Welcome Sign, I'm sure everyone's very aware of it. Been Twin Lake there, and it's been, been a fixture for a long time. I know I've seen pictures of it over the last few decades at different points, and it's been taken care of in different ways. At one time, someone took very good care of it. I heard it was Kevin at the elementary school for a while, and some other people at different times, and they planted flowers and they had a nice dirt area around there, you know, a nice setup. I had, once I came in, various weeds had overgrown it. I had those cut back a few times, but wanted to do something more with it. So eventually, all those, the wild weeds ripped those out, replaced that with rock. But maybe minor stuff could be done. Once maintenance started pulling and pushing and prodding on it, a lot of the wood is rotted near the bottom. And looked at having a couple of people, different people do it from the community, that type of thing. Didn't get a ton back from that, so looked at a couple of different avenues. What this is, is for a sign company themselves to, to do a full replacement of it. So not a small project. I originally wanted to keep it as a, as a somewhat small project, but completely redoing it would be a decent amount. So it's a little over nine grand is what this vote is for.
Now, is this coming out of the weekend budget?
Didn't budget specifically for this, no, because I was hoping to keep it lower. I was hoping to keep it in a few grand region rather than, rather than five figures here or approaching five figures. And so this would come out of the parks construction area and, which the money, the money is in there. We could adjust the budget for it, too. And, but that depends partially on the amount that is used if the Spark Grant goes through. Because we had to put a certain amount in there for if we're renting equipment to do demolition if that comes through, and if we're doing that next spring, if it comes through, and if we're doing it next spring before April, so before the next budget starts.
Any, any mention of that?
Yes, we just had a meeting today, Christie and I did with them, so a few more things. We had to get them some numbers, write out a few things, and then that's going to be turned in. Fully submitted by the twenty-third.
Second.
Yep. And then we're waiting to hear after that. Isn't Christie's done well in getting together all the paperwork and everything on it?
Think we get another quote from someone else, too?
Well, we had, we had some quotes on doing partial, partial pieces of it, but they were, they were also building up on doing the whole thing. We still need to remove that foundation part out of there. And we were thinking about putting up like wooden pillars and putting those in ourselves and then putting a sign in between them. So, and I actually requested from this sign company to also get this quote on just being the sign in between, but they said they would prefer to do the foundation that it was going on also. So, yeah, otherwise, anything more on that, Nate, that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's in rough shape. Anyway, you do it, even if I did, it's gonna cost a lot. It's, it's, I would rather have a professional sign company do that, but I don't really mind either way, but if I, like, like Justin, we've had multiple people inquire about it and just all, people just aren't, aren't as interested because it's gonna cost more than, you know, what we jump for or whatever they can afford. It's, it's a lot. But it's one of those things, and this one, it's untreated lumber. It's just painted. It's been there for forty years. So if we assign a company to come out and do a treated lumber in a concrete base, it'll last a hundred years.
That's what they see when they come into our town. It's what, what welcomes them into our community, too.
And that big, beautiful building now is on the corner where Los Nicos used to be across the street.
Yeah.
I mean, that looks so nice, too. I'd hate to have a nice building as I'm driving through Twin Lake and just see your sign.
Yeah, I mean, the sign's not falling down. There are some pieces off of it, but it's.
Understand, it's not gonna get better.
That's true.
So I make a motion to approve it, replace by the Twin Lake Rock, sign up to ten thousand dollars.
Support.
All right, we've motioned by Carrie, support by Christie. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Lee.
I guess.
Noah.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three for ARPA funds. And this has to do with the construction, right? So the different pieces to this, we've had, we saw one, a piece for the roof and the A C, right? We approved that amount. And so I wrote up the ARPA plan so that we could pull that out of that because we're gonna be getting the bills on for those soon. And DL Wars, they, they rushed getting all their subcontractors for getting the numbers in so that we could see the full number, including the inside remodel in this one as well. And we originally came in at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We sat down with them and chopped some things, got it to a hundred and, just under a hundred and fifteen thousand. He looked through stuff, and I got a number today that's a hundred and ten thousand, so we're getting, cutting a few pieces off, so trying to fluctuate that down. Originally in the budget, I guesstimated, obviously, we didn't have a quote or numbers from contractors or subcontractors at that time of two hundred thousand dollars for the project, which was hoping to keep it. And so, but this is approaching two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with, with the remodel and everything.
Yes, it's an additional fifty thousand dollars, which I support.
It would increase it fifty thousand dollars from what the budget was made out.
Correct.
But that was to tear off the existing roof.
Correct.
That was the, the original quote was putting new roof on top of old roof that was leaking.
Correct, but I did think that was a bad, that would have been a bad judgment call.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where you can't, right? If you got a six, yeah. It'll be like putting up a new sign up with a foundation that's fine.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three for ARPA fund expenditures on township land construction.
Motion by Carrie. Support by Noah. Any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Christie, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight for zoning amendments. This is the one that Lee was mentioning in his report. There's a few different items in here. So there's adjustments to the temporary, temporary special use permits. There are adjustments to the special events venues, and there's an adjustment for the enforcement process. The enforcement process, obviously, is one of the pieces that I was big on. It looks significantly different in the way I had written it in the resolution and the way that we passed it in the general ordinance. That's because Steve went through and he adjusted it to format it into the way the zoning ordinance currently looks. So he just incorporated those items into Act One. That's why it looks different the way it's laid out, but otherwise it includes the same, same steps. Do you have a motion on that?
So. So let me, correct me on this. So we're charging people money to have a party on their own property. I get that.
Steve, you want to speak to that?
For special events venues?
Yeah.
That's a special land use where host parties for other people. They're not private parties.
Like a commercial endeavor.
It's a business.
It's a business. They're just.
In the, in the major change, I believe, and correcting if I'm not really wrong, I missed the major change, was that before you had to have it in a building, but now you can set up a tent or have it in a field.
Correct. It allows you to utilize open space in addition to.
So it gives them more.
Financial buildings.
It's more.
Yes.
And the cost goes up with that?
There's no chance of the cost.
Okay.
So basically, it's opening it up to a provision like this.
It's making special events venues a little easier.
And you just skip it, so it makes it more equal.
That makes sense. Okay, good.
Let's motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three oh eight for temporary special use permits, special events, venues, enforcement process. Second.
Motion by Noah, support by Renee. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Christie, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Passive. Next, we have cemetery coordinator position. And so Heather, who's the, the deputy treasurer, has taken this over anyways to work on getting, getting some things organized there. She's doing well at it, so she's already doing the job. This is just to officially declare her by board authority being the cemetery coordinator.
I make a motion to approve Heather Cooley as the Dalton Township Cemetery Coordinator.
Motion by Renee, support by Christie, and any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Nate.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christie, yes. Noah.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our first discussion, Bright Trail Land. And so this came up because the Friends Group for their jumping bike trail, they've, they're putting grants, sometimes they get sponsors and they want to do something that they had a covering they wanted to put in down on the property behind Saitiva, which is in Skeggen Church. But with selling of that property, they're not gonna be able to do that. And then they also can't put anything in along the Business Park area in Dalton. And so it'd be nice to have, for them to be able to have a repair station, benches every, every so often. And so we also want to be careful and pump brakes on that because eventually that Friends Group probably won't exist, and then the municipality will have to, you know, maintain that type of thing. But you also run into an issue of where are they going to put the things? Where can they possibly expand if they have a narrow right of way in, in the bike trail? And so Fruitland put some land aside that already bordered the bike trail. And I, based on that, I was like, I can look up and see what borders. We had two pieces of land that bordered the bike trail. One is a narrow strip in between the bike trail and Whitehall Road, between two houses, which seems kind of like an odd thing to set aside for the bike trail. But this other one is right on McMillan, and on the south side of McMillan, there's already a small parking lot that goes with the bike trail.
Yeah.
North of that, there is a triangle piece that's about an acre of land that shares a very large border, a long border with the bike trail. So it seems like it would be odd for someone to.
Can you point out where it's at?
Yeah, so it's, it's this.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And so it's a little wooded lot. I don't have any plans for it. The, the Friends Group doesn't have any particular plans for it, but I thought it would make sense to probably set it aside in case they wanted to eventually build a pavilion where people can stop on their bikes or something like that. Otherwise, there's not going to be that there, basically, which, I mean, the bike trail can just be a pass-through area, of course, but it also seems like an, an odd little piece to develop if someone wants to sell ice cream to bikers out of their backyard.
I'm wondering how we can stop the friends from cutting back some wild bikers that are free food. They did it last year, and I was just, I, I put, they were right at picking season, and I'm like, they just killed all these berries. And they were not going, I mean, I, I'm on that bike trail, so I know that they were not invading onto the trail itself.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, guys.
Yeah, I mean, it's before the grass, you know, we're trying to keep it cut back in little ways. Even Nate and the maintenance guys went up and did portion of Fruitland recently. So, because, you know, we don't want to let it get overgrown and then you get worse bug problems and all of that type of thing. So, but I think, I remember what you're talking about, and I think that was the Friends Group went out there and cut it a ways back.
Like, they were not my friend that day.
So. But they, I, I appreciate the fact that they put in effort and worked there.
I do, too. I do, too.
But I want to see what, what the board's thoughts on this were. If, if we want to set aside, if we want to do a resolution, I can look up if we should maybe adjust to be something like that.
But yes, give us. Why wouldn't?
I don't see a great reason not to.
Okay.
I didn't know, when I first started looking, I wasn't sure if we'd own a piece that would apply, but that one, zone is perfect. My, my guess, but I didn't, haven't found us any paperwork, my guess is that was probably the idea with that at one point. I don't, I don't have paperwork that's obviously showing that, but it exists, I just don't know what it is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next, we have enforcement aid for seniors. Yeah. Next, we have enforcement aid for seniors, so Clay brought this up. Is, you know, people get turned in for the license or complaint based on enforcement stuff. And it, it's, some of the people, they just don't wanna do it and that type of thing, but other people, a lot of times you'll get seniors that they, they struggle with getting it done, some of it. And so he was inquiring, specifically he was inquiring into senior village money for cleaning up. Weed, you know, this is, I think, a thing you wanna be careful with, uh, right, because it's good intention, super good intention, right, is, is to help people. And so, but if you go down this route, you can have people gaming the system of having, you know, it's cleaned up from other people's tax money. And, so there should be a limit on number, there should be a limit on amount, um, maybe there should be an application process where if it does seem like they're trying to game the system, they could be denied. If it was out of senior village money, which we're already allocated for this year, right, because we did the snow flowing, then we did the safe seniors. But if we did the senior village money as part of this for next year, then obviously that could only go to seniors. If we were deciding on something like this out of the general funds, then if we could do, you know, poverty exemption disability thing, which could be separate. So, but I wanted to see where, where people were on this, I, I think it's a really good sentiment, um, Steve and I have talked about it, um, I also, I also have my hesitations.
Do, do we know how many seniors already utilize the twenty-five dollar dump pass?
We do know, we certainly don't have that partitioned out per senior. Um, or by seniors versus other age groups, I think we had a few hundred people, um, last year, maybe a couple hundred, a few hundred people that used the twenty-five dollar pass last year. Because I do have a book on that.
I also think that having limitations on, you know, uh, like you said, people gaming the system.
Right.
You're gonna have, unless we have parameters, you gotta have some type of guidelines set up for it, so we're not being played.
I like the application, I mean, I would assume, don't they have to fill an application now? Be able to, they don't, see?
Well, we don't give aid, right, we don't give aid for.
I definitely think an application process, because then, then there's some accountability.
Right.
Someone's put their name on a paper and.
Yeah, they're, they're making the case and someone's approving it.
Right.
Think that'd be necessary, at least have something, so if they, if they're having a hard time, of why they can't keep up.
Well, and, and when you, when you're dealing with people that are senior citizens too, you're dealing with people that are of cleanup process in the first place.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we gotta make sure that there's gotta be something there. Some type of restrictions where they can't do it physically or something like that.
Is this gonna cover like, uh, maintenance, cutting the grass and cleaning up, or is this like cleaning up trash, or?
Well, it can be a group of that, because you, uh, the grass being a certain height, especially for visibility, but even above that can be part of it. There can be trash and stuff, and then a lot of times you'll get, uh, you know, a, a jump car or a half a boat sitting in someone's yard or something like that, so.
Well, I was saying, now, now we have taxpayers taking care of all people's property at the same time, so we, like, this is a slippery slope, um. I would wanna see something put up to, to talk about, because right now it sounded like a good idea, but again.
It's well-intentioned, I, I don't question the intention. No one, no one makes the case that, uh, Clay is warm and fuzzy, right? And so, it's, uh, you know, but he, but he also, he tries to work with people, and so if he's seeing a legitimate need, you know, then, then I think that's reasonable, so it's well-intentioned.
So what are the odds of getting either local churches involved or Boy Scouts of America involved with helping, with some volunteers?
I believe there has, I believe there has been some of them, I think one of the churches, I think Heather actually, um, helped, someone through one of the church groups. And so, but that's obviously, I mean, that's outside of us, it's if those organizations want to do it.
Again, if there's an application process, then when Boy Scouts or a church groups calls up the township and says, hey, we wanna do, I need to, I wanna do a special project and I need, do you have anybody that is asking for help? At least if there's an application process, again.
There's, there's the event.
So you're a hub. Dalton Township could be a hub, whether we can, whether we approve it or not and help pay for it, at least if we've got a, if we're a hub of some sort.
We're the people that have to pull community hours services, so if we have something in mind.
We've used one here in maintenance, so, yeah.
So you know.
Is this worthy to look at, if we can zoom in on it, get more detail?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll look into it, think about it some more.
It's better than giving out gift cards, can I just? I don't know, some of theirs.
Yeah, the village did do that.
Yeah, so.
We are into our second, uh, public comment, if anyone would like to come up, yes, come up, Mr. Seer.
That's contested, I'm on. Dalton Township Board.
I'm Seer, County Commissioner of Staples Road. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, promote a group, uh, Muskegon County Conservative Women's Caucus. Um, their mission is, uh, Muskegon County, uh, Conservative Women's Caucus strives to engage conservative women through educating, networking, recruiting, fundraising and advocating for conservative issues. Our purpose is to collaborate and partner with like-minded women interested in facilitating positive change in our region and areas of influence. Only women, by the way, meant to get involved too, I've been there. Okay, so, um, and on the back of the card here, uh, it says, uh, they're pro limited government, pro freedom, pro legal immigration, pro education without indoctrination, pro law enforcement, pro life, pro family, pro medical freedom and pro constitution and Bill of Rights.
Math, I like it.
That's basically what they believe in, so it's a great organization. Anybody's interested, I've got a few of these, I'll just leave you a few of these, if anybody's interested, I can get you, uh, get you a card too.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Good for me. Hmm, anyone else? Anything on anything? I know, I know Rachel's gonna give us library update, right? No? Yeah, okay.
I thought we already got Rachel, come on. This is unperdum. You're dragging me up here some.
Yeah, Saturday program, you're getting excited about it, starts next Monday, the nineteenth officially. Um, you can go online and sign up right now, if you'd like to. Um, it's for all ages, including adults. Don't we have any of those here?
That was good.
Adults, if you read, uh, six books and enter it in our Bean Stack Program online, get a free car wash on us.
Ooh.
Yeah, um, and we have some interesting programs going on. One of the things, July seventh, we're gonna sponsor the movie On Deck down at the L S T downtown. Um, they're gonna show Guardians of the Galaxy, free popcorn, everybody, so come on down to that, we'd love to see you there. Um, we have program for seventh through twelfth graders, the checklist of things that they can do and some cool prizes we're handing out this year. And then for kids sixth grade and under, they keep track of the minutes that they leave. And then we have programs, starting Monday, the nineteenth, uh, Joel Tacey's gonna come and do, um, an entertainment program, he's a crazy, vibrant, crazy guy, does all kinds of fun stuff. Um, we're gonna have the Week After Broadway Boot Camp, so if you have any kids who like to perform, that'll be something cool. Um, Brad Lancaster's coming July tenth and doing a magic show. So, um, try one of these flyers, see what's going on, everybody's welcome, it's free for everybody. Um, your taxes have been used to pay for this, so we'd love to use it back. I'm coming, everybody's welcome, you have any questions? You may call us down then, or stop me wherever you see me, all right? Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good, all right, anyone else on, anything else? More comment on anything, let's go.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Carrie?
Support.
Support by Noah, any discussion, there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.